Okay, well, look, let's do this. I've got 9:30, so let's go ahead and get started here. I want to pray for us, please, and then we will begin here. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, very thankful for this day, very thankful, Lord, that we are here together, Lord, getting into your word, offering our praises, Lord, unto you, certainly for the praise reports, Lord, that we have received among the church bodies, certainly for Paula and Ted and that wonderful, wonderful news. Praise God for that, Lord. We also lift up many, many others, Lord, who continue to need our prayer, Lord, and certainly as the body, as brothers and sisters in Jesus Christ, Lord, we are praying, Lord, we are hopeful, Lord, we are certainly with laser-like focus praying for healing and a miracle, Lord, for their own healing. To you be the glory always, Jesus, and we ask this in our Lord and Savior's name. Amen. All righty. Okay, folks, well, we are going to give our attention this morning to the 10th chapter in the book. That would be chapter nine in the book of Daniel. And we'll try to get through this entire chapter. I've got some notes. I thought it was one of those chapters that using a variety of different sources on it for good explanation was helpful to me and maybe to you as well. So I thought what we would do, if you are in agreement this morning, is to turn to chapter nine, please, and let us read it in its entirety, and then we'll go through the book, and I've got some notes, so that we can all understand what's in this chapter. So let's do this. With chapter nine, let's read through...I've got a natural break right after verse 12. So let's do that. If someone would read chapter nine, verse 1 through 12, that would be a good start.
In the first year of Darius, son of Xerxes, a Med by descent, who was made a ruler over the Babylonian kingdom. In the first year of his reign, I, Daniel, understood from the scriptures, according to the word of the Lord given to Jeremiah the prophet, that the desolation of Jerusalem would last seventy years. So I turned to the Lord God and pleaded with him in prayer and petition, in fasting and in sackcloth and ashes. I prayed to the Lord my God and confessed, "O Lord, the great and awesome God, who keeps his covenant of love with all who love him and obey his commands. We have sinned and done wrong. We have been wicked and have rebelled. We have turned away from your commands and laws. We have not listened to your servants, the prophets, who spoke in your name to our kings, our princes, and our fathers, and to all the people of the land. Lord, you are righteous, but this day we are covered with shame, the men of Judah and people of Jerusalem and all Israel, both near and far, in all the countries where you have scattered us because of our unfaithfulness to you. O Lord, we and our kings, our princes, and our fathers are covered with shame, because we have sinned against you. The Lord our God is merciful and forgiving, even though we have rebelled against him. We have not obeyed the Lord our God or kept the laws he kept us through his servants, the prophets. All Israel has transgressed your law and turned away, refusing to obey you. Therefore, the curses and sworn judgments written in the law of Moses, the servant of God, have been poured out on us, because we have sinned against you. You have fulfilled the words spoken against us and against our rulers by bringing upon us great disaster. Under the whole heaven, nothing has ever been done like what has been done to Jerusalem."
Okay, all righty. Thank you, Alicia. Okay, let's pick up, please, 13 through 19. 13 through 19, will someone read that for us?
Just as it is written in the law of Moses, all this disaster has come on us, yet we have not sought the favor of the Lord our God by turning from our sins and giving attention to your truth. The Lord did not hesitate to bring the disaster on us, for the Lord our God is righteous in everything he does, yet we have not obeyed him. Now, Lord our God, who brought your people out of Egypt with a mighty hand, and who made for yourself a name that endures to this day, we have sinned, we have done wrong. Lord, in keeping with all your righteous acts, turn away from your anger and your wrath from Jerusalem, your city, your holy hill. Our sins and the iniquities of our ancestors have made Jerusalem and your people an object of scorn to all those around us. Now, our God, hear the prayers and petitions of your servants. For your sake, Lord, look with favor on your desolate sanctuary. Give ear, our God, and hear. Open your eyes and see the desolation of the city that bears your name. We do not make requests of you, because we are righteous, but because of your great mercy. Lord, listen. Lord, forgive. Lord, hear and act. For your sake, my God, do not delay, because your city and your people bear your name.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Okay, let me just stop there, because we can really look at chapter nine in two ways. It's broken up into two sections, really, a prayer section and then a prophecy section. So what we have just finished here in its entirety, verses 1 through 19, is that prayer, prayers of confession, and I want to make this note, and we'll come back to it in just a moment. So we can really look at the person of Daniel as a standout, someone who is a prayer warrior, someone who's truly a servant of God. What he's doing in a very humble way, okay, is that he is including himself in this prayer and basically saying, "Lord, forgive me as much as you need to forgive your people, your priests, the Israelite people." So what a humble act. I mean, that takes a strong, that takes a courageous person who is walking right with the Lord, living right with the Lord, to say, "I'm bearing this sin and this iniquity as well." So look at this as almost like, similarly, and maybe I brought this up last week, too, in our own confession and pardon, he is leading this confession and pardon, but bearing that weight of sin as well, and in no way saying, "This is on you, people. This is your sin, your iniquity, your..." He's not doing that. He's including himself as well. So just a real standout in terms of a disciple of God there. So let's finish the rest of this chapter with verse 20. Let's see, that would be...yeah, I tell you what, whoever would like to read this part, go ahead and finish it, if you would, verse 20 through 27, if you would, please. Thank you.
Now, while I was speaking, praying, and confessing my sin and the sin of my people of Israel, and presenting my supplication before the Lord my God for the holy mountain of my God, yes, while I was speaking in prayer, the man Gabriel, whom I have seen in the vision at the beginning, being caused to fly swiftly, reached me about the time of the evening offering, and he informed me and talked with me and said, "O Daniel, I have now come forth to give you skill to understand. At the beginning of your supplications, the command went out, and I have come to tell you, for you are greatly beloved, therefore consider the matter and understand the vision. Seventy weeks are determined for your future and for your holy city, to finish the transgression, to make an end of sins, to make reconciliation for iniquity, to bring in everlasting righteousness, to seal up vision and prophecy, and to anoint the most holy. Now know therefore and understand, that from the going forth of the command to restore and build Jerusalem until Messiah, the prince shall be seven weeks and sixty-two weeks. The street shall be built again, and the wall, even in troubled times. After the sixty-two weeks, Messiah shall be cut off, but not for himself. And the people of the prince who is to come shall destroy the city and the sanctuary, and the end of it shall be with a flood, until the end of the war, desolations are determined, and then he shall confirm a covenant with many for one week. But in the middle of the week, he shall bring an end to sacrifice and offering, and on the wing of abominations shall be one who makes desolation, even until the consolation which is determined is poured out on the desolate."
All right, thanks, Ted. Appreciate that. Okay, so I thought particularly this second part needed some in-depth review here and understanding. So just looking for a moment, if you would, just look at the book here. I've got some highlighted parts that I wanted to mention to you that I believe are worthy for us to look at and also take note of. So let's start on page 258 for a moment, 258, the top of page 258. What really stood out to me personally was the statement that the pastor makes about Daniel being a man of prayer and also studying...I think that is absolutely key, and the scriptures prove true to that. It's mentioned multiple times in the book of Daniel that, hey, he's a man of prayer. He is serious about his prayer life with God. So in no way do I think that is in any way simplistic. I mean, I think, too, that that makes you and I, as people of faith, stand out as well. It pleases God, in fact, when we are a people of prayer and scripture, and also a church of prayer and scripture. So take note of that, and then he goes on to mention these prayerful scriptures, Ezra, Nehemiah. Daniel, I found it interesting that they're all chapter nines in these Old Testament texts as well. So he goes in this top paragraph about how meaningful prayer is. So take note of that first part there. Also, if you'll jump over to page 259, okay, what I want us to take note of are the scriptures that he was looking at, that he was reviewing, and just a couple of notes there. I've got it marked in several places here. Let's see, but yeah, I can come back to these notes. But one of those scriptures that he was reviewing, just for our own information, was Jeremiah 25:11, Jeremiah 25:11, speaking of the desolation, okay, that being the desolation of Israel. The other scripture, okay, that he was reviewing was the 29th chapter of Jeremiah. And then the top portion of page 259, it goes into detail, it gives us some important dates there. Daniel 9 was 538 B.C., about 67 years after Jerusalem had been captured. Take note of that, okay. Going down that page just a little past halfway, it says, "Though he was concerned about the return of his people to their homeland, Daniel focused the majority of his prayer..." And highlight this, please, "on repentance and confession." Very important, very important then, very important for the believer and for the church now, okay. How was that done? What mode was used there? Fasting, fasting, sackcloth and ashes, okay, something that's often mentioned and maybe even practiced during Lent, at least in our own tribe of the Westland Church, but it certainly is something that doesn't need to be confined to just the Lent season, to those 40 days. I believe that fasting is a wonderful way in which you and I can focus, can center ourselves totally on God. It's a sacrificial kind of thing, kind of discipline, because you are saying, "Lord, I am going to give you my full attention, my focus on you," and passing, skipping on So just wanted to mention that on page 259 there. If you would, look on with me on page 260 for a moment, okay, right above the illustration there. As Daniel finished his prayer, he anticipated an answer concerning the 70 years of captivity.
There, I liked the Torah question.
Yes, ma'am.
It is mentioned here many times that Gabriel was praying after he read the message from Jeremiah, and it made me miss thinking, is that from Daniel or copying Jeremiah?
Is that from Daniel or from...sorry.
It is that he prayed and said before all this was coming, it says, "After he read the message and the vision from Jeremiah." And it made me thinking, is he copying Jeremiah? Yes, or is it really what Daniel really saw? Or did they have both the same vision? That kind of kept me very confused there.
I'm confused, too.
Well, if it is saying, "After he read what Jeremiah's vision was..."
Okay, okay.
"...he put down his vision." So he was not sure of himself? He copied Jeremiah's vision? Or did he really had his own vision? This is what I like to know.
Okay, okay, I'm with you. You know, Elka, I don't get the sense that there was any kind of angst or a feeling that, you know, he was inadequate in any way. So, folks, please, speak up here. I don't see here that he...
That's a message that's on page 261. It's...there's a lot from Gabriel written there.
Yeah, yeah.
When the Lord sent Gabriel to Daniel.
Jeremiah 25, verse 11 to 12.
Randy, say it again. The Lord sent Gabriel to Daniel to make sure he understood the vision.
Right, right.
That's proof that he actually had the vision.
Yeah.
But he was reading Jeremiah when this came to him.
Right, right. He was reflecting on Jeremiah's message.
Message, yeah.
You know, and it dawned on him that, you know, it's been 67 years after he got to figuring it.
Sure.
We've got three years left to go, and we're gonna go back home, you know, so...
Right, right.
I think that's the connection of him, you know, mentioning Jeremiah.
And too, Elka, what I'm looking at on page 261, right under that large paragraph, middle of the page, it says there, "Even before Daniel finished his prayer, Gabriel was there." So that leads me to believe that he did, in fact, voice that message, that this wasn't something that was...
Yeah, I was seeing this too, because Gabriel is in all good, I mean, is the angel of God.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
I was seeing probably that really had him convinced to 100% believe his vision that was out.
Yeah, yeah. Let's do that. Let me kind of build on what Elka was asking there, just in terms of the message itself, the terms of the message. That starts on page 264 and 265. He outlines this rather well. So bottom of 264, you can kind of take it into different sections, as he does, "to finish the transgression." So note that, if you would, okay? And then he says in quotes here, bottom of 264, "to finish the transgression," as meaning "sin will come under control and will no longer grow and flourish," okay? "To finish, to end that transgression," so that it is no longer viable there. And then over on page 265, the other bolded one, number two, "to make an end of sins." Okay, now, right under it, I thought this was very noteworthy, "this phrase points to the time when sin will be eliminated." Wow, praise God, okay? "Not only in principle, but also in practice." This can't happen until the reign of Christ during the millennium. So this is what is to come, okay? What is to come, that future victory here. Going down just a few sentences here in quotes, "They shall not defile themselves anymore with their idols, nor with their detestable things, nor with their transgressions, but I will deliver them from all of their dwelling places in which they have sinned and will..." And note this here, "cleanse them. I will cleanse them." Okay? And then reconciliation. What is the meaning of reconciliation for iniquity? Look at this, atonement, so being one, okay? One with God. What does that mean? Well, sin is ended because of the atonement of the Messiah, okay? That is important, and there's multiple biblical references of that in the New Testament, in fact, that we have been washed clean by the blood of Jesus. So this is a reference to that and what is to come. Number four, "to bring in everlasting righteousness." The Messiah's death not only, and underline this, "atones for sins," but it has the power to give the nation of Israel right standing. So righteousness, okay, righteousness. We can fall from righteousness, okay, but Jesus Christ Himself, He is that righteous God. God is righteous. So God put righteousness upon Jesus.
There, interrupted.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Here, it's "to make end of sins." I always was so curious, why you use answer this light. Now, I feel I found my answer in this part here, because it was scattered around, and so in Daniel 9, there is a lot in Mr. Time and all this, and this was...there was sinning clearly all there.
True, that's right.
And I know you studied it two days, this chapter, of course.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Francis is a Jew, and it always had me...he has written down that 69 years, they completed not the 70, because there was a sin. Jesus, God, made his promises, and he...where's his sin was? Because he came in life, what was...where I have this written down, where he came, it was said before, that he will, in the Gabriel said, that he will come on a donkey, and it came exactly there, happened, and they didn't accept it him. They laughed in his face, and you know what they did to him? And they should have glorified him, and they didn't.
Right.
And that's what they missed, they would have felt this is supposed to be 70, and they didn't do it. They came on the 69, what was it, 69? Hold it down, I found it very important to my personal thing. And it was not fulfilled, because, yes, 69 it came, and so they had not the 70 fulfilled, because it didn't accept. It was interrupted, and then it says in Daniel here, "Seven, there is one more coming." It was interrupted, and then Jesus, that becomes a new chapter then. And we live like now in this one, this...I like "commodest" life, as they have a different word, terrible life, and they too, they will have a rapturous life, you know, till they all come, and I really, it does make me thinking about the Jews will, till they all come together and start to live with that last hundred or whatever, this life starts.
Maybe rapture, would that be the word?
That would start, as they say, that would be... Well, one week of the year is seven years, that's what it says.
Oh, yeah, 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 we'll get to that.
And it's...I have got, where I have written this down? When you start, it's... I wanted to find that place, and hold me to forty-five.
Well, I'll tell you what, Elka, when you find it, just...
Yeah, it's page 270.
Okay.
It's...yeah, it's 69 weeks. You must first reduce them to their century. We have 69 weeks, or seven years each of these years, 660. So, and here's a mess written down. We have it in our book, too, and I'm lousy in maths, anyway. 69 times, seven times, three in a...they had only 360 in a calendar base. They had not 61 like we had, 31 days. They had 30 days in a month. They came to 173. came to a hundred seventy-three, eight hundred and eighty days. And they started, this was the beginning of March fourteenth, four hundred fifty-five B.C. So the numbers of the days brings us up to the April sixth, thirty-two eighty. And this was the day our Lord rode into Jerusalem. That I found very interesting that he all picked us out.
Sure.
And this shall be seven weeks and sixty-two weeks. The street shall be built again and the wall even in, in troubled some times, Daniel nine twenty-five. Gabriel explained to Daniel that the seventy weeks of the prophecy history would be divided into C-section or period, and then as the period in our book written down, seven weeks of years, forty-nine years, sixty-two weeks of years are four hundred thirty-four weeks. One week of years is seven. And then it says also that where the Messiah died, we started a new calendar year. And, and that I found very interesting too, we start with thirty-one.
Let's, let, let's build, let's build on that just for a moment. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just offer some, some notes on those, on those figures, just so that, just so that
We are living now in an attractionate time and it has been going on for more than two thousand years. And we do not know when Israel starts again. And it can make me sing in their fight right now so hard.
Yeah, they are. So let's, let, let's look at, let's look at these, these numbers for a minute. It's, it's mentioned several times in the book, but we can, we can spend some time there for a minute. So the seventy-sevens, the seventy-sevens, four hundred and ninety years are decreed for your people and your holy city to finish transgression, to in a sense, put an end to sin, to atone for wickedness, to bring in everlasting righteousness, to seal the vision and prophet, and to anoint the most holy, the most holy one, Jesus Christ. Okay, that's from Daniel nine and twenty-four, okay? So just, just a summary, a summary of Daniel nine and twenty-four, 'cause, 'cause Elka, Elka brought this to us and I wanna, wanna build on it, okay? So just, just a couple of things involving, you can, you can take note of this or, or highlight it in your book, but let's kind of run through it just for a minute. Okay, so seventy-sevens are decreed, okay? Seventy-sevens are decreed in the scripture, okay?
Okay, where are you in the book?
Okay. Well, actually, these are, these are my own, my own notes, actually. Yes, ma'am, my, my own notes. So just, just a, a couple of things on that. Seventy-sevens are decreed, okay? That being four hundred and ninety years are ordained or dictated by God, okay? This is seventy weeks of years or seventy times seven, okay? And almost all, all Bible scholars agree that the weeks designate four hundred and ninety years, okay? All right. Another part to this, "to finish transgression, to finish transgression," meaning the completion of the sacrilegious sins, okay? An, an end of it, a completion of it, okay? That calls God to desolate his people and temple, okay? Israel's ultimate apostasy was in killing their Messiah, God's ultimate high priest, that being, of course, Jesus. And we can look at Daniel eight, twelve and thirteen, and Daniel eleven and thirty-one for that reference, "to finish transgression," okay? Here's, here, here's another, another part for clarity, okay? Where the scriptures talk about to put an end to sin, to put an end to sin, "to end or seal final purification offerings," meaning no more bulls and goat offerings, okay? That was first introduced in earlier scriptures, Leviticus four and nine, okay? The death of Jesus would then put an end to this need for sin offering once and for all. There is, there is a completion, okay? All right. Next part, "to atone for wickedness," okay? "To atone for wickedness." So, so think of, think of the word atonement or, or atone, "to reconcile," okay? "To reconcile for liability or punishment," okay? "Deserve since the first father," that being Adam, okay? "We are therefore put back then atonement in good standing with God when that happens," okay? In a sense, God is appeased or satisfied through his son, Jesus, through his bloodshed, through his death, okay? All right. Three others here, okay? "To bring in everlasting righteousness, to bring in everlasting righteousness, the removal of deserved punishment and sin with the establishment of God's righteous kingdom," okay? So for instance, this kingdom was heralded by John the Baptist, okay? Preached by Jesus and launched into the world at the beginning of Pentecost in Jerusalem, okay? Happening fifty days after Christ's death and resurrection, okay? This kingdom is the fulfillment of the eternal kingdom in Nebuchadnezzar, taking us back to Daniel, chapter two, okay? All right. Two others, "to seal vision and prophet, to seal vision and prophet." Jesus fulfilled all of the Old Testament prophets, prophecies, sealing it then with a signet ring, okay? And when the king's ring was placed on that document, it was then official, okay? It was, it was final, okay? So Jesus fulfilled all of the Old Testament prophecies, sealing then with a signet ring, making it official. The life and death of Jesus was the seal then of all of God's revelation, okay? Which is, which is key, okay? And then lastly, "to anoint the most holy one," okay? "To anoint the most holy one." This is referring to the anointing of the already holy one, Jesus Christ, who is referred to as the high priest in scriptures, who was raised up as an anointed messianic king upon his ascension, where he then sat at the right hand of God, okay? That being from Mark sixteen and nineteen, okay? Okay. Just, just, just a couple of, couple of other things, okay? The numbers, seven plus sixty-two plus one week, okay? As we'll see in the final three verses of chapter nine, let's go there if, if you were with me, okay? Chapter nine, the, the final three verses, final three verses. So let's look at, beginning with verse twenty-five. "Know therefore and understand that from the going forth of the command to restore and build Jerusalem, until Messiah the prince, there shall be seven weeks and sixty-two weeks, the street shall be built again, and the wall, even in troublesome terms. And after the sixty-two weeks, Messiah shall be cut off, but not for himself. And the people of the prince, who is to come, shall destroy the city and the sanctuary. The end of it shall be with a flood, until the end of the war, desolations are determined. Then he shall confirm a covenant with many for one week. But in the middle of the week, he shall bring an end to sacrifice and offering. And on the wing of abominations shall be one who makes desolate, even until the consummation which is determined is poured out on the desolate." So we, we see, we see in these final three verses, Gabriel lays out the timetable for David that leads right up then to Jesus Christ, God incarnate on the world stage, to then usher in this promised kingdom, okay? To usher in this promised kingdom and fulfill the destruction and desolation of the disobedient people of Israel. Indeed, Jesus laments, okay? When he says, "Behold, your house is left unto you desolate," that being from Luke thirteen and thirty-five, okay? Luke thirteen and thirty-five. So what, wanted to, what wanted to, wanted to make sure we were good on, on that. Okay, let's, let's go back, let's go back for a moment, please, to page two sixty-six, two sixty-six, okay? I, I wanna, wanna go, go over some of this stuff. We highlighted some of it, but let's, let's look at two sixty-six, number five, "to seal up vision and prophecy," okay? What, what I want us to highlight there is that bottom sentence, okay? "To seal up vision and prophecy." This demands a time beyond the boundaries of the first sixty-nine weeks of the prophecy, which we will soon see, ended at the time of Christ's triumphal entering into Jerusalem. And, and Elka had, had mentioned that earlier there, "to seal up vision and prophecy." So think for a moment, Christ's triumphal entry during, during what we recognize as, as Palm, Palm Sunday and moving into Holy Week. Okay. Number six here, "to anoint the most holy," okay? Look, look a couple of sentences down right under that heading where it says, it refers, it refers to the sacred place, okay? Highlight this, "it refers to the sacred place in the temple, often referred to as the holy of holies, where the re-establishment of religious service will take place in the future temple." And then take note of, of this appeal there, okay? Moving over to page two sixty-seven about the, the metrics here, okay? What, what I, what I think is, is noteworthy is right under the scripture of Daniel nine and twenty-five, we have that paragraph there, okay? This, this we've, we've landed on several times here. "Gabriel told Daniel that the future four hundred and ninety years of prophetic events would commence on a certain day. The decree to restore and build Jerusalem would signal the beginning of the seventy weeks or four hundred and ninety years prophecy." Highlight that if you would, please. Circle and, and star, star that. So we've got that, we've got that reference point there. Okay. The, the next, the next few pages there, page two sixty-eight, what I, what I made note of, and please, ball means do the same, a little past halfway down on the page, "the completion of the prophecy, Messiah the prince" here, okay? Look, look at this reference, Daniel nine and twenty-five, "from the going forth of the command to restore and build Jerusalem, until the Messiah, until Messiah the prince, there shall be seven weeks and sixty-two weeks." Right under it here, I think, is a good, good noteworthy paragraph. "What was Daniel to understand concerning the completion of this prophecy? Just as there was a certain time for its commencement, there would also be a certain time for its what? Its completion, right? Okay? That time, according to Daniel nine and twenty-five, is the time of Messiah the prince." So note, note that if you would, okay? And, and then, and then if you wanna note about the term prince right under it, it's a title associated, of course, with kingly authority, of course, making reference to Jesus himself, the prince of peace, the, the ruler, the God ruler. Let's see. And then, okay, okay, computing of the prophecy, the bottom of page two sixty-nine. Take, take note of those numbers again, sixty-nine, seven, and three sixty, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty, okay? Computed the time between the decree for the walls of Jerusalem to be, and note this, rebuilt, okay? And the coming of the Messiah, the prince, okay? I think that is, that is very, very noteworthy there. And then let me, let me take us to the, the, the next page. Elka had, had mentioned, mentioned this, just, just as a, as a good reference, if you'll look at that, that full paragraph at the top of page two seventy, toward the, the end of that paragraph, okay? I think this was a good explanation. Since we have sixty-nine weeks of seven years each, and each has three hundred and sixty days, the equation is as follows, okay? Sixty-nine times seven times three sixty, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty days, beginning with March fourteenth, okay? Four hundred and forty-five B.C. This number of days then brings us to April sixth, thirty-two eighty. Now, as, as Elka had mentioned here, just note, please, with an arrow star, "this is the day our Lord then rode into Jerusalem." How remarkable, right? I mean, absolutely how, how remarkable. The, the other thing that I, that I noted here that we've mentioned several times, but you can, you can note it in your, in your book. Look at where it says here in the bulleted points, "Gabriel explained to Daniel that the seventy weeks of prophetic history would be divided in, in three sections or periods." And I find that interesting with a lot of things. A, a, a placement or, or, or pairings come, come in threes here. Seven weeks of years, forty-nine years, sixty-two weeks of years, four hundred and thirty-four years, and then one week of, of years, one week of years, seven years there. So you can, you can note, note this. Okay, if, if you would, just kind of putting all of this together, and this was helpful to me. I hope it's helpful for you as well. Look on page two seventy-three, and this is just kind of, kind of making, making sense of something that's quite, quite dense, quite, quite complicated and needs several, several readings here. But look at, look at this visual and just kind of. But look at this visual and just kind of plugging in those bulleted numbers on two seventy, plugging that in to the visual then on two seventy-three. Just kind of look at how it's coming together there. So there's a lot, wow, wow. But an amazing prophecy he calls in, and I do believe.
It helped me to take the book of Revelation back up.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That's when I understood it better.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right, absolutely. So please, star page two seventy-three as a helpful guide. What I had noted on page two seventy-four, okay? Page two seventy-four, right smack dab in the middle, I thought this was very helpful here. The death of Christ and the destruction of Jerusalem both occur after, not during, the sixty-nine weeks. The temple was destroyed forty years after the death of Christ. These events do not occur in the seventieth week, for that week doesn't begin until the Antichrist makes a covenant with the nation of Israel. So that brings it together. So please, star that, star that. With the remaining time that we have, the three of the things that I noted that I want us to just look at briefly here. Page two seventy-six, two seventy-six, okay? Again, right in the middle here, where it says, Jesus Christ Himself will shorten those horrific days by returning to earth to judge the Antichrist and His armies and quell the rebellion on earth against God. When, matter of fact, let's do that now. Let's look at this scripture if you would with me. Let's go to Revelation for a minute, Revelation nineteen. Revelation nineteen, eleven through twenty-one. Nineteen, verses eleven through twenty-one. I've got this section entitled, Jesus Christ on a white horse, okay? Jesus on a white horse. So just recapping here from page two seventy-six, I want us to note please, Jesus Himself will shorten these days by returning to earth to judge the Antichrist and His armies and quell the rebellion on earth against God. This will bring seventy weeks of Daniel to a close. The final week ends with the second coming of Christ to the earth, okay? So let me read it for us here. Then I saw heaven open, and behold, a white horse. And he who sat on him was called faithful and true, and in righteousness he judges and makes war. His eyes were like a flame of fire, and on his head were many crowns. He had a name written that no one knew except himself. He was clothed with a robe dipped in blood, and his name is called the word of God. And the armies in heaven, clothed in fine linen, white and clean, followed him on white horses. Now, out of his mouth goes a sharp sword, that with it he should strike the nations, and he himself will rule them with a rod of iron. And he himself treads the winepress of the fierceness and wrath of almighty God. And he has on his robe and on his thigh a name written, King of kings and Lord of lords. Then I saw an angel standing in the sun, and he cried with a loud voice, saying to all the birds that fly in the midst of heaven, Come and gather together for the supper of the great God, that you may eat the flesh of kings, the flesh of captains, the flesh of mighty men, the flesh of horses and those who sit on them, and the flesh, excuse me, of all people, free and slave, both small and great. And I saw the beast, the kings of the earth and their armies gathered together to make war against him, who sat on his horse and against his army. Then the beast was captured, and with him the false prophet, who worked signs in his presence, by which he deceived those who received the mark of the beast, and those who worshiped his image. There were two cast alive into the lake of fire, burning with brimstone. And the rest were killed with the sword, which proceeded from the mouth of him who sat on the horse, and all of the birds were filled with their flesh. So Jesus Himself will shorten those horrific days, make them far less. And this, in fact, is His return, return to be the great and mighty judge there. So wanted us to have that reference there. Okay, well, I tell you what, since we've got about three minutes, let's look at our last two pages here, two seventy-eight, two seventy-nine. Daniel for today, I think this is very noteworthy, all five of them. Hope for the future, let us know and believe that we always have hope for the future. The bottom sentence really helps to bring it all together. Prophecy tells us that Christ comes to what? Rule and reign forever. He is the ultimate judge, bringing down Satan. So confident in the presence, what I noted there, God's prophetic story. It's important that we know the word of God, we know those scriptures about prophecy, His prophetic story. That will in fact help us to build and to strengthen hope for the future. Number three, of course, something that is very key, holiness in living, that is our own Wesleyan tradition. It is something that I believe is the spiritual glue to having a very fulfilled and life-giving relationship with the Savior, holiness in living. Reasons to share the good news. I like this last sentence where it says, prophecy provides refreshing and encouraging news. Don't be afraid of it, don't shy from prophecy. I think those prophetic scriptures are very, very much in need of reading and study and understanding. Refreshing and encouraging news, let's note that. And books like Daniel and the book of Revelation, often they're not tagged as refreshing and encouraging, but they should be, okay? They very much should be. Edification, exhortation, and encouragement. The apostle Paul writes that God gave prophets to the church to build us up, set us straight, and keep us going. Wow, okay? You know, I would make the case that too often we shy away from that, but that is so very true. Edification, exhortation, and encouragement. Set us straight, build us up, keep us going, okay? Our world, right? Our world needs that, needs that now more than ever. Okay, well, that'll bring us to the end of this chapter here. Let's do this. Let's, you and I, page two eighty-one, okay? Let you and I cover for next week, okay? Page two eighty-one in our book through... I'm looking at what we have remaining. Let me ask you, would you want to go through three thirty-four? Are you okay with that? We could go through these last two chapters for next week and... Or excuse me, that isn't...
There's a twelve.
There's a twelve too, yeah. Give me some feedback. Do you wanna spend next week just in chapter eleven?
Chapter eleven in the book is Daniel ten and eleven.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, that's correct. So we could...
We're covering two chapters of Daniel, ten and eleven.
Okay, okay. How about this then? How about, since that's a double whammy of scriptures, how about we for next week, read in the book itself from two eighty-one to three oh eight, okay? In the book, chapter eleven, two eighty-one to three oh eight, okay? And then in the word of God, that is Daniel ten and eleven, okay? Ten and eleven. And we'll tackle that for next week.
When our last meeting, the...
Yes ma'am, the following, the following week.
The twentieth.
Which will be...
We'll do twelve next week, and then we'll do...
The twentieth.
Next week we'll do the epilogue.
Okay, so for next week, next week, we will... Yes, yes, so the last week will be Wednesday, November twentieth. Yes ma'am, and we will read chapters twelve and the epilogue in the book, and we'll be done. How about that? Okay, very good, very good, praise God. Okay, I'm going to pray for us, please. We will go for it. Lord, to you be the glory this day and always, Lord. Getting into your word, Lord, diving right into it. Lord, we read, we walk, Lord, not just by sight, but by faith. Lord, that you are guiding, that you are encouraging, that you are convicting us, Lord. To you be the glory, and may your will be done, Lord. What a privilege, what a pleasure it is to study, Lord, and to apply the truth of your word. Let us live in the spirit of the truth of your word every day, in Jesus' name. Amen, thank you.